First thing would be an update from Kurt Ford, Carter Inslee. This will be on our lift station project.
Morning Commissioners, Mr. Clark in San Antonio. Just to give you a few quick updates on the lift station project. We've started the material submittal review process. Still got a ways to go, but all these papers here are material submittals that we've gone through specifically this project. So it's quite a bit of an undertaking and there's still more to go. And basically the process is, you know, we write technical specifications, contractor and their vendors look at them and say, okay, I see that this is what we're planning on using, is it acceptable? Some of that stuff is acceptable, some of it's not. So it's just a process we go through to ensure that they are meeting the standards and specifications that we've got out there. We hope to finish that process soon. One of the things, one of the big items that we're, we've been going through is the wet well precast structure with HDP liner. It's kind of a specialty item. Georgia Environmental Protection Division requires secondary containment. One of the things we've allowed, they've allowed us to do is use that seamless liner that's fused into the wet well to add added protection, just containment in the structure. So there have been some, a lot of little details that we've been going through with Old Castle. The manufacturer and the contractor have had hour long meetings about it and just trying to get it right on the front end. There is some delays. There's been some cement rationing that we're trying to work through. And then also trying to get some, the aluminum access hatches, those have to, those have to predate, I guess, any of the pours. So just working through some of those items now. The notice to proceed was issued for June the 14th. They're coming up really soon. Permits are in place and the contractor said he would start as soon as the wet well arrives. Now, I've tried to, I guess, pin down the manufacturer on when that may be. They won't give me any hard dates. I've been told the hatches could be two or three weeks out and then the pours. But, you know, for me to give you a date on when the wet well will be there, if they're not willing to tell me, then I can't go out on the landline and go by then as well. But hopefully here, pretty soon, in the next month or two, I would hope that would be the case. Now, in the interim, the contractor has mentioned, I spoke to him yesterday, he has mentioned that he's going to go ahead and start installing some BMPs. And those are basically, they're called best management practices, but really erosion control items along the creek. And then there's also going to be a temporary storage area or staging area for some of the dirt that's going to need to go back, backfilled into the landfill when those items, that material is excavated and hauled off. We need some suitable backfill to go in. So some of that stuff should happen soon. I know that some materials have been ordered and delivered to some of the vendor's storage yards. I was asked yesterday, do we need to go ahead and mobilize those materials to Gilmore County or do we leave them there until we've got everything? And my response was, if they're ours and they're at the, the vendor's got them, we need them up here. Because I've heard a lot of stories about, you know, the Robert Peter to pay Paul, people seeing materials out there, you know, taking them for other projects. So I've instructed them to go ahead and start bringing those materials on to, to the landfill. One of, another big item I need to bring up, at the end of August, I'll be passing the torch on this project. Chad Seid, who is one of the part owners in the firm, will be the primary point of contact. He's met Jim Smith, Ryan and Randy. And, you know, I'll still be available by phone, you know, if I need to answer any questions or whatever the case might be, I'd be glad to do that. But if y'all have any questions for me now, I'd be glad to answer them. You know, go into more detail if desired, but that's all I got.
Okay. Any questions? Okay, thank you, Kurt.
Sure, thank you.
Fox, your head.
This past week, our baseball softball team participated in the Mountain Athletic Conference and all the tournaments. Our eight-year-old softball came in second place. Our 10-year-old softball came with the match champions. Our 12-year-old's placed fourth. In baseball, the eight-year-old were champions. 10-year-olds were third place, the 12s were fifth place. So we had a pretty good turnout. Frank brought back some hardware. The ETC tournament, 10-year-old summer slam will be taking place next week. We also have the GOP All-Stars taking place next week also for baseball and softball. The RBI baseball tournament is this weekend, so everybody, probably about 40 to 50 baseball teams in town. And that's in conjunction with us in Fannie County, so they're playing both places. As far as I know, I understand is every hotel room is gone and a bunch of cabins are gone and also with these people coming in town. On Friday, they're going to be doing their opening ceremonies down at River Park. So everybody's invited to come down there and see what they placed. So that was six o'clock. So there'll be a big crowd there. Football and cheer regations are still going on now, but we got our lift station put in at River Park, so that's a big plus. Takes a lot of worry on those and on that set of these systems. And this weekend, we also have the Optimus Club tennis tournament, Justin Elliott Memorial Tournament is taking place. So it should be a big turnout there.
I should mention too, given here, that Kevin has obtained for us a $470,000 DNR grant for additions and improvements at River Park with no matching funds on our part. So we should be getting that, those funds fairly soon. And I think that'll make a nice difference for us out there.
One of the main projects we're going to get down for, that's the first. A lot of changes to be made, a lot of improvements looking forward to.
Didn't you tell us that the old tennis courts were removed at no charge?
Yeah.
We need to officially take that person.
Yes.
Absolutely.
Can you wish on an awesome job?
Forget writing the letters. Yeah, she'll give us one of the contact information before I even thank you later.
Okay. No problem.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin.
Golf course, Mike.
Good morning. I don't have a whole lot of other than what we talked about last, last month. Just been, as you can see there, the month of May was, was a great month. That's probably one of the best ones we've had in two or three years with the holidays. And it was right at 2,000 rounds. Merchandise is selling. That's a, that's a lot of golf on the small golf course. Other than that, the, many people were talking to me to go buy the cards. The Wi-Fi is in. They made a couple of weeks ago, put that in, monitor what the cards do. Hopefully by the end of the month they'll be. Other than that, it's just a bunch of golf.
When are you going to 27 hole?
We're not.
Any questions?
I'll just let you know, Mike, when I was at the Habitat Golf fundraiser up in Blue Ridge, a lot of the folks, when I told them who I was and then down here, they were like, oh, the golf course looks so much better, it looks so good. So they were giving us kudos for doing a great job. So thank you.
We came a long way in what, eight, nine years?
And we've got Mike to thank for that.
Yeah. And my boys played there recently, haven't played since high school when they were on the team, and they were very impressed.
Good.
Thanks.
Thank you, ma'am. Jim, public works.
Good morning. Let me, a lot of the items that I've reported to you, we've got agenda items, so I'm going to just briefly touch on those. The theme of projects, all of them are finished. And I believe Keith Caceres has an agenda item, which is a good thing, later on on your agenda report on that. Royal Carver Cape Bridge, that project is still, just as I reported last month, and that is July, there will be a final DOT walkthrough inspection. All of the right away has been acquired and it is still scheduled for a work to begin in December of this year. Harret Simmons Road paving, we started that paving project on Monday. The county portion of that road is four tenths of mile. It is, was an outstanding L-MIG project from previous years. And we were able to do that without actually requiring bids. It was under $200,000 and we were, our two estimates, Johnson Paving and Colditz. Colditz was the low estimate and they were given a notice to proceed and started promptly on, on Monday. And depending on whether they are down there working today or trying to work. So that project should be finished within the next few days. The, all of our L-MIG years are now completed with the exception of a portion of Bodie Road that we have been trying to finish that out. And because of staffing and other, and weather, that is the only thing liking in the previous years. And as soon as that is finished, then we will start on the 2022 L-MIG. We have stopped piling stone at the road department now for the 2022 L-MIG and continue The flood control dams, that work has been completed. I think you should have gotten a copy of the spreadsheet, but we spent about $43,000 on the flood control dams. And the reason for that is because they had not been touched in three years. So we had a tremendous amount of work to be done to catch up. So we are ready now for whoever to submit the invoice, $16,000. $23,000, we ran about $2,000, slid over $2,000 per dam.
And I should note that the reason nothing was done for three years is because the, the contract after 20 years expired and it just took us so long to get a new contract.
It was not fault of the county and thanks to Chairman Paris, he held firm. And I think $16,000 is what we have budgeted to receive and that's what we extended. We had a line item of $16,000, but obviously we went over that. So we will wind up having to eat that. Any questions on the flood control dams? I've already reported to you on the L-MIG road paving for 2022. The next two items that I have here are agenda items, Rock Creek Road Bridges. And Ryan will report on that and our road paving bids. We opened bid yesterday. You should have a copy of the spreadsheet in your packet there and we'll deal with that when that agenda item comes up. Solid waste, you have already heard from Kurt on the lift station project. You have our monthly report there on our tonnage. As you see, our tonnage is up, which means that our expense for disposing of that waste will also go. We received here in the month, a reimbursement for 2021 of the hazardous waste trust fund that was in excess of $24,000. Sandy, and she has that money now and it's in the bank. We put an additional compactor in service during the month. We now have three compactors at the landfill convenience center. One of them is for recycled material and the other is for household waste. And that will enable us to deal with the growing waste that we have at the landfill. The landfill is, is our heaviest used facility. And so all of that went into place, the new building for the convenience center attendant and the compactor was put in service this month, or actually this week. Any questions that you might have?
I have a question on roads. I was in Bucktown recently and the new road where the slide was, there's absolutely nothing growing on the bank.
Yeah, we, we have hydroceded that twice and we'll have to go back and do it again.
I thought it would be to use a grass mat because you hydroceded the old burlap pit from three to two, which didn't work. But DOT uses a grass mat, it's not working beautifully.
We will try the grass mat.
So it's certainly something needs to be done.
Anything else?
All right. Thank you, Jim. Anybody have any unfinished business? I don't know. So we'll go to the resumés. The first, two actually are together. James and Jerry Davis, from R1 Residential Ovency to A1 Agricultural. And I believe the wood conditional use is the second one for a wedding and events venue. Karen, can you kind of give us a synopsis of this?
Good morning. Yes, the applicant is, he has intention or he would like to use the property that he has for a wedding and events venue. The access to that would come from Gates Chapel to Zion Hill to Harper's Creek. Now, the Mr. Davis lives on Black Cliff. Black Cliff is not maintained by the county, but Harper's Creek and Zion Hill and Gates Chapel are. Access to the events venue would come from Harper's Creek. That is their intent. The, during the public hearing, the neighbors were objecting because they didn't feel like that the road was sufficient, that there were a lot of curves and places where people would get hit or hit, hit the rocks and litter on the banks and stuff like that. And then they were also concerned with noise and that sort of thing. And due to those thoughts, the planning commission was in agreeance with the, with the neighbors, that it would not be ideal. That there was a good idea, but just the location was not as good. But I will reiterate that Harper's Creek is kind of maintained. They did what we two.
Black Cliff.
Is it?
Yes.
I'm sorry. So, but, Black Cliff is kind of maintained. I will, I will digress. But the access would not come from Black Cliff, it would come from Harper's Creek.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am.
I, I would say a few things. I drove out there myself and I think the planning commission did the right, had the right call. It was, to me, for guests traveling that far out on that road in the dark, it seemed like a lot of, that there could be some dangerous situations. So that's my feeling on it.
Well, I have always held that when people come here and they actually do their homework and they ensure if they're buying in an R1 area, that they're surrounded with R1s and have an expectation than living in a residential area, that it would take a really, a really good reason to move that away from the R1. And I don't see that here. I do see the negatives and in my opinion, the, for both of these, planning zoning board was correct in their recommendation.
I'm interested to see it too, I think, to plan zoning in the right position.
All right, so we can move on from those then. Next one is Marion and Martin McIntosh, from R1 Residential Ovency to A1 Agricultural. They want to conform zoning to use with a pasture and a small hobby farm. Any comments on that?
I'm fine with the proof.
I called Karen, I was questioning making an island, which I thought we were trying to avoid. I do, I do know there's a lot of agricultural property in the area around it. Has farms, well, so I'm, I'm, I'm just cautious. I don't feel that comfortable making an island in the middle of residential area. However, after driving around there, it does seem that it's really farmland. Just wanted to make that statement.
Well, it will be creating an island. And again, there's quite a bit of R1 around there, but there's also a significant amount of A1.
Yeah, that's why I was. And there was no, no one was against it, then the neighbors, right? Because I think they have farm.
And as I understand it, they're not really changing what they're going to do with it. They just want to, I mean, apparently they're already doing this, they just want to align the zoning with it. I'm okay with it myself. Cecil and Dorothy Townley, from A1 Agricultural to R1 Residential Ovency. They want to pull 2.21 acres out of a 28.8 acre tract to give their daughter to build her home on. Personally, I'm okay with this.
I'm good.
Leonid and Natalia Vershkov, from A1 Agricultural to C1 Commercial. Just transform chicken houses into warehouse, into a warehouse facility. As I understand it, the house would be used as an office, the warehouse would be a shipping point that they would ship from. For myself, I believe that the planning zoning board got it right when they recommended the NIO.
I agree with that.
Joseph Hunter, from R1 Residential Ovency to A1 Agricultural. This is another one to conform the, to use to the zone.
It's another island, but the neighbors, same situation.
Yeah, yeah, it is, but there's again, quite a bit of agriculture around it. And from what I've been able to tell here, they're not going to change the usage, they're just again, trying to conform the zoning to it. Personally, I'm okay with it. Duell Sanford, from R2 Residential High Density to A1 Agricultural, conform use to zoning and to combine with foreign properties. For myself, I'm, I'm okay with it.
I'm good. Sorry.
I'm sure.
Yes, sir.
Yes.
I'm okay.
Okay, the ordained deacons as trustees of Barry and Baptist Church, from R1 Residential Ovency to P1 Public Institute. This is for possible cemetery or church activities.
I'm good.
I'm good with it.
Same.
I'm certain.
Same, yes.
Christopher C Weaver, from R1 Residential Ovency to A1 Agricultural. This is to combine with adjacent parcels. I'm okay with it myself.
I'm good.
Another one, Christopher Weaver, R1 to A1, and again, to combine with adjacent parcels. So I would be okay with that. They look like the same thing to me. What am I missing?
Actually, one of them has to change the A1 to an R1 and then subsequently there too, after that approval, is to allow for the guest house. That's out there in the Anderson Creek. And you'll see a rezoning before you next month on the balance of property left in that subdivision.
Okay, they were both written identically, so I'm sorry, I did miss the very initial conditional use.
Yes.
Okay.
You're good.
Well, I understand.
Well, they, they are part of Anderson Creek and they're part of, their tract is zoned back. They do want to have a guest home. They're only three or three point something acres. So if it's let back, they can't do the guest home. So they, they went ahead and applied for the rezoning so that they would be zoned properly to build a guest home.
Now, I believe in Anderson Creek, I think they sort of planned for guest homes on that particular subdivision, don't they?
They did, you know, and Doug was, y'all actually did his license for the 300 plus acres. Yep. And this one was outside of that big tract. So they, they didn't get theirs done and that was done. So they had to come in separately to apply before, well, and actually it wouldn't matter when they done it, because if they got approval, they'd be fine if they done. If they don't get approval, then they're just hit anyway, because with an A1, three acres or, even in a non-conforming lots size, they'd still be able to put one home, but not two.
But there's the, there's already the possibility that a number of guest homes will be built around them without even having to come through us.
No, 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 they'll have, they'll have to do it.
Well, yeah, but I mean, it wouldn't be a routine thing, though. It was, it was based on that front.
They have it in their covenants to allow for them, but if they choose to build one, they will still have to ask for the conditional use, even if the zoning is free.
Personally, I'm okay with it.
I'm fine with it.
Okay, that brings us to citizens wishing to speak. Anyone that would like to speak on any subject for up to 10 minutes.
Yes, sir.
No, that's the timer, which he turns it off.
Am I on the timer?
Yes, sir.
10 minutes.
We're from Buckhorn Estates, and we understand on July 12, I believe, coming up, that a new lease is going to be entered into or between the county and Buckhorn Estates. But we also have been hearing for the last couple of years that the T-box on hole number 12 has got to be relocated, and they want to relocate it within the confines of what we call the park, where the meloxes are. And, again, I haven't seen anything on it, so I went up there a few days ago to take some photographs, which I have. And the rationale first, as explained to some of us, for the relocation of hole number 12, the T-box, was there was a collapse of the area up there, and it was going to be dangerous. And then that moved to recently, that they can't grow grass up there, so therefore, the albers can't put their balls down. Am I allowed to pass this out to you? I'm assuming, has there been a proposal, a written proposal submitted to the board on the cost of relocating that 12th hole into the area known as the park?
I don't believe we've had a written proposal with cost on that. But I would, I would say we may be putting the cart before the horse here, because one of the items on the agenda for a little bit later on here, is to actually review quit the bill, is going to be renewed. And so, and that's not a given. I, I think people are sort of expecting that that's going to be a routine thing, but it's not.
Thank you. And that's all we're asking, is just some priority.
Okay.
So, there, it hasn't been, there's no proposal on it, but if it were to be considered in the future, who would bear the cost of relocating that 12th T?
I, I think you might have misunderstood what I was saying.
I probably did.
I, I don't mean to say that moving this T is not a given. That, that pretty much is. The cost from there would be borne by this, by, by the county. What I'm saying is not a given, is that the contract will be renewed, or that there will be a new contract.
Okay.
In which case, it's all a moot point.
Okay. I guess the last thing that we have a concern over is that there's been a couple of loads of dirt that has been relocated in a park area adjacent to, like, a little creek that feeds into Elige River. Would that not require some sort of a silt containment curtain to be in standards with either county or EPA?
I'm not familiar with the dirt. Mike, can you address that for us?
The issue is asking about the dirt, nothing, it didn't leave the rock block. You should have done the complete, the melox, the, 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 the holeing gate behind.
So, we'll need to relocate that?
Will the homeowners be advised if and when a consideration is going to be put forth on the proposal of the relocation of 12th T?
If the contract is renewed, then yes.
Okay. And will be allowed to speak at it?
If it's, well, if, I'm sorry, wait.
If the contract's renewed, we just exclude that area.
Really? Yeah, that would be, that would be the situation. Right. So, at the very least, if the contract is renewed, that area will be moved out of the portion that's contracted for.
Okay.
And in that situation, they probably would not be noticed, because that would not be part of your lease property anymore.
Okay. I thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak here.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Jeff Lewis, Kelly WIS.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis.
Good morning. Kimberly Raples, a concerned Gilmer County citizen. I'd like to read to you code of ethics for this board and employees of Gilmer County. Encourage, this is section 2111, code of ethics. Encourage high ethical standards in official conduct by county officials. Establish guidelines for ethical standards of conduct for all such officials by setting forth those acts or actions that are incompatible with the interests of the county. Three, require disclosure by such officials of private financial or other interests in matters affecting the county. I want to talk to you today about something very serious. Not that I don't always, but this is very serious. Members of the county board, here, at least one, met, citizens have brought this to my attention, so this is a great concern to the citizens of this county. Employees of this county, employees of the city, of both cities, members of the police department, sheriff's department, and their staff are participating in a group called Say No to Tom Wiley. Okay? In this group, they criticize a candidate for office for his clothing. They have attacked their, his, his family members. They have through social media. They have posted horrific allegations and accusations against the candidate. And members of this board, okay, at least one, this, employees of this county and our public safety are, are members of this. I would be happy to provide you all the list, as I have acquired one, of all the, with screenshots of all the members of this page who are part of this. Now, you could say that members, anybody can participate, participate in any group they want to, but this is a top-down problem. Because what do you think is going to happen at the bottom, when the people at the bottom are seeing that members of this board and city boards, city councils, are part of a hate group? They're going to jump in, and they say, this is okay. This is all right. This is the way we do things in politics here in Gilmer County. And I, I think that it is time for this board to adopt, besides just the code of ethics, some specific social media guidelines, because this county is getting ready to get sued by myself, because I've been brought up in that group. Lies about my own household are in that group. And, and members of this board and other city council boards, or city councils are involved in that as well.
We actually do have social media guidelines, and if you will provide me with the information that you have, I will ensure that anyone, any county employee, now, we even have anything to do with the city or the police or anything, any of that, but, that any county employee will remove whatever and leave the group. Now, really, I can't require them to leave the group. I can just require that they not post malicious postings. With that said, you brought this up in terms of ethics. Would you like to file an ethics complaint?
Yes, I will.
Okay, I will get you the paperwork for that.
Okay.
And then we can go over there. But in the meantime, if you'll give me the, the information that you have, I will take care of the immediate effects of it.
Okay. I'll do that. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Okay, anyone else? Okay, if not, we will move on. And the next item is the discussion of possible action of the expiration of the Buckhorn Estates POA lease in Gilmer County golf course. Now, this particular lease, in July, will end 10 years. And the provisions in the lease say that it renews automatically every year up until July of '22, at which time it completely expires and does not renew. So that one of two things would have to happen, there'll either have to be a completely new lease, or the lease will simply expire and not be renewed. Right now, the conversations that I've had and the way that I'm leaning would be toward letting it expire and not renewing it. We, I've had some conversations about what the effect of that would be. And in terms of the POA, really nothing. That would eliminate the idea of if we relocate the T-box, that, that we would need to negotiate with the POA. So that would be one way the POA would be affected. It would mean that the POA could not tell people that they have to leave the area. And I understand there's been a few instances of that. And, while I understand that you've leased it, and you would have the right to do that, it looks really bad for the county and for the visitors who come to the, to the golf course and see this beautiful place and walk around on it. So, that would be the other effect. It would just be simply that anyone could, could go out there. So I've given my opinion. I'm just going to back up and let y'all talk.
I wish I had that. I don't fully understand. It's a department, isn't it?
You know where the meloxes are there? There's a little area behind there, and that's mowed area, and they've got some swings and that sort of.
One of the Elige River?
Yes, that's it. That's the area.
And that does include hole seven or whatever?
Twelve.
Twelve?
It is not twelve, not all. It's not across the creek.
But what is it, though, that you're proposing that would be moved onto that area?
It is, it is the T-box. And I've half drew this up and up, just to give you an idea, this was a year ago. And we would go roughly about 600 feet from the creek into the park and get back to the fairway now. The only thing we could do is add some tees. Those tees are so hard, it's got grass on them now, but given the, the, the constant having sodded every year, it doesn't matter what I do. So, the sun never hits that T-box really good in the winter. So, the T-box will be put there. And, of course, the gazebo, they've got one of those, it'll have to be moved. And this is, this hasn't even been approved. I mean, we've, we've talked about it. It's going to take, it's going to take some time, especially if we do it in the house.
And so, how many go back to the homeowners association?
No.
No, it's, it's the golf course's property.
I mean, that's all, that's all county property. Every bit of this county property. It always has been.
We just leased that portion to them.
And if you move the T-box, can I assume that you maintain the park or would that be done?
Yes.
Everybody will have a chance to enjoy it.
I mean, that's the, that's the only benefit that we're getting when we're leasing, is they, we don't have to cut. They, they take care of it, they cut it, and we need it. And if you take the lease away, then somebody at the county, the golf course, is going to have to, we're going to have to take care of it and cut it. That's the only downside. The other side is they, they pay to keep it cut. But I have their calls myself from homeowners complaining about what they've said, because they, and they come to the golf course and why they can't.
Do you think you'd be able to have, got it, Mark? Okay, so we will then pick this up tomorrow night?
Has anyone spoken to the homeowners association president?
No, until, just in the last couple of weeks, we didn't even realize that this thing actually completely expired rather than. Well, yeah, we'll need to have a conversation with them, but I, I don't want to negotiate whether or not we do this. We, we need to either renew it, or not renew it. We need to either give them a new contract or not, based on the needs of the county. And, you know, beyond that, I'm happy to have any discussions with them, but they won't. So, it's going to be tomorrow night before we'll know anything, for sure.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Okay. Final adoption to the levy tax ordinance of the Gilmer County Code. David, we all squared away and ready to go on then?
Yeah, we'll be pulled. Couple little minor details after the adoption and everything. There's, is the issue of the contract, they'll need to be approved and ratified at some point in time. Did get feedback from Carlene on that. I don't know if I've received anything from either of the two of y'all at this point. I didn't check the spam filter, and only then mentioned, but have y'all had a chance?
I have not responded to it.
And Hubert, have you had a chance? That is the contract with the destination organization that we spent.
I have not with that. Precisely.
Is, is there any reason we have to, they change our amount a couple of percents?
Oh, is there any reason? Y'all, y'all did that up here by, you didn't do it by official action, I recall, but you stated that was your objective.
I thought 43 was?
Thirty-eight or 39, and y'all went to 45.
Okay, all right. I don't remember.
And I, I don't.
It was, I guess.
I think they may have.
Okay, that's, I just, somehow I had 43 on my, on my brain, and saw 45 in there, so, but it's not a, not a problem. I was just asking about it.
Yes.
Okay.
Until July 1 start date?
That's the, what my notes state is July 1 start date, as far as the collection. So, if, Ken, I will head and share the, that contract with Jennifer then, and let them begin to look at it. There may need to be a special call to ratify that contract before the end of the month.
But for today, all we need is just a, I mean, for tomorrow, I'm sorry, all we need is just a motion to approve that.
Yes.
The final motion.
On the final adoption, yes.
Okay. Well, I'm, I'm okay with it, so. Yeah, so we all are. Discussion of possible action on road paving bids. Well, we've got a number of roads listed on that. Jim, the roads here include, some of these roads are, are Elveg roads, are they not? Are these all, are all the roads that we bid on outside the Elveg, or just some of the Elveg roads on there?
The only, the only one that is inside the Elveg is the third phase of Turner Town Road from the Walton, Walton Mountain Gate to the bridge, 1.1 miles. That is currently tarred and chipped, and it is in the 22 Elveg. But we, we wanted to try to do that. But we, we wanted to try to do that with Hotman and that's why we had it listed in, in both places. If, if, if worse came to worse, we wanted to do the Elveig and just do the tar and chip surface on it, which is what it has now.
It really needs asphalt.
It, it really needs to be asphalt. You have increased traffic beyond Walton Mountain there, you've got a subdivision, a very exclusive subdivision up there, and the traffic is, is growing and there's building on this section of road as you go up. If the chairman will remember, we paved one mile of single lane to serve that subdivision. Two years, two or three.
Yeah.
Other than that, I mean, the numbers speak for themselves. We have a million and a half dollars in the capital budget, of which part of that is going to be eaten, that we'll talk about a little bit later, on the Rock Creek Bridges. So we're, we're down to either more money being allocated to our road paving or eliminating roads. I want to tell you that, and Ryan and I have talked about this after our bid opening yesterday, the two roads that we feel that are absolutely need to be done is Legion Road and Roberts Ridge. Those two. If, if the other roads can't be done, then obviously we'll try to move them to another year. The way the bid specs were written is the board of commissioners, we have the ability to eliminate roads and although I would not recommend this, actually pick and choose contractors on roads. As you see from the spreadsheet, the two bidders, Collets and Bartow Paving, Collets was obviously the, the low bidder. There was one road that Bartow squeaked out Collets on, and that is Monkey Road by some six thousand dollars. But if you do that, then you, you wind up cutting your nose off to spite your face because they're gonna charge you for mobilization to do one road, and I would doubt that Bartow would come from Carterville, Georgia to do that one road.
One question that I have, Sandy, is in the ARPA funding. And in particular that, that we haven't, did we ever get our money in?
We should have been getting it, but they're saying it.
I know some counties have and some hasn't, haven't, so. And I had that conversation with some of them at the end of last week, so I needed to verify what we had. We could dedicate a portion of that, and I believe there's enough of it unallocated at this point, to the Rock Creek Bridges. Now, that's not gonna be like we put money into that million and a half, but it will avoid taking money out of that, that's for something other than roads. In other words, it's not gonna solve an additional million and a half problem. But it would be helpful, and it's, that's just one suggestion of something we could do.
It's your decision, the, the way the bid specs are written, the bid, the bid's agreed for sixty days. And however, the contractors, I mean, both of them have already contacted us. In the bid specs, they are required to provide additional bonding and insurance information that would be to whoever was awarded the contract.
Well, right now, Legion Road and Roberts Ridge Road, the two of those, and the Rock Creek Bridges, if we leave those there, are pretty much gonna eat up what you've got before we do any of the other roads and shrugs. If we pull the Rock Creek Bridges out and, and fund them through ARPA or whatever, you know, that might give you one more of these roads.
Might give us one more, or possibly, well, the one, the, the lowest cost road is the one mile Flat Branch Road to Bend Drive.
Okay, well.
Phil, I'm playing with a half of a deck here. I've waited a long time for year-end figures. We didn't have the figures from last year, there's gotta be some money there. So if we, if we see what we have there, that might help our situation.
Sandy, can we get those pretty quickly?
I'm waiting on some final general entries for, for the audit report, once I get those for.
Are we able though to determine if we've got any money left over before those general entries are made?
Capital funding, I can determine that for you.
Even though, general funding, we should have a million dollars at least.
I'm sure we.
Because we substituted ARPA funds.
Right.
For salaries and wages. So I think we're.
So we would at least have that, because I'm, I feel confident we would have more and I could, I could get some good.
Can you get that much more now?
I could try, I'm trying to get financials done, but you know, which would.
We've got a special meeting, but you. I'm really frustrated with the auditors, and I think we need to address that when they present it on here. There's no excuse for this. We pay them, if they can commit to doing better, then we need to look elsewhere.
Well, they're also dealing with me, you know, basically.
Well, you're not, you're not the holdup though, right?
Well, no, not that I'm.
Okay.
But I am a one man show, so sometimes it takes me a little while to get information into them. But for my auditors, they're not, they're not waiting on me. They are working on the final report now, though I know.
But I've heard that for two months.
Going back and forth.
That's not your problem.
They've had some personnel wins, you know, some people leaving and that kind of thing, so it's just been a process.
But you're super good.
Humor wasn't no excuse for them, but a few other boards I'm on, we're having the same delays with our auditors this year, I don't know what, they're shortage in order, staff? No, I'm just letting you know that. I don't know what's going on.
I've been to, I've paid county, some of the counties are.
But there, there have been very few changes in your figures and their figures.
There's certainly many, I can, I can try and get some of the numbers, but yeah, for y'all.
And, and the money that's coming this year, and we had some preliminary discussions about that, and we talked about water and sewer and so forth. One of the things that we talked about was again substituting salaries.
Right.
So is there, yeah, so it seems to me there is potential there that we've got the million from last year and then we would be able to have another million from this year. And if that's the case, and we put it all toward roads, we might squeak through this somehow.
The, the only other thing that I want to comment to you, and, and everyone is experiencing but the cost of material is going outside folks. And I had one contractor tell me yesterday that they have experienced four pricing increases the first of the year in asphalt.
But that's taken care of in here, right?
It's locked in, yeah, for sixty days.
Now, the roads that we were going to pave tarred and chipped with the, that was Elveig, I believe?
Yeah.
No? Yes?
The, the tarred and chipped is Elveig, it is.
Okay, so, so that's not even gonna be a, we're gonna factor that in here, probably, just wanna make sure.
The only thing that will help this is if we remove the Turnin Town one point one mile from this bid proposal and put it back in Elveig.
Honestly, but somebody else in Elveig can leave this year, we can.
That is the other option.
That's a bad move, it's really.
It is, you know, that's.
I don't see tarred and chipped save that move.
Pardon?
I don't think tarred and chipped would save that move.
Well, I mean, it's tarred and chipped now.
And, and where it is.
You know, but you know, if, if you're with tarred and chipped, you do not get the longevity that you get with asphalt. But it, it is better than a gravel road and sometimes tarred and chipped is a, I don't wanna say a Band-Aid, but it, you have to go by it.
It beats gravel.
Yeah.
Charlie, what are your thoughts on utilizing that ARPA money?
I think it's important that we do as much digging as we can.
All right, thanks. Gives us something to look into for tomorrow. Sandy, if you can do the, just the capital part, well, you want to, you know, too, but you're having no interest in that ARPA million, right?
Well, whatever else is there, I don't know what else is there. See, we haven't seen year-end figures.
Yeah.
We may be in the hole, I don't think we are, but I mean, you know, maybe more.
Okay, whatever you can get us tomorrow night with that would be good. Okay, that works for y'all. But I'm assuming though that the decision for Collets is kind of a no win here?
Right.
Okay. The decision to accept the Collets bid and things would be?
Yes.
Okay, good.
They're the ones who did the previous work recently, did such good job.
Yes. Okay, discussion of possible action on HPHC bids for the Gimmer County Detention Center and Courthouse. Now, I looked at this, I'm sorry.
Sorry. I said, here we go, this one.
I looked at this last week and realized that, I know at one point I had said, I think, what we need to do is refuse this one and rebid it. But at the time, I was thinking that the five hundred and some thousand dollars that's mentioned there was just for the detention center. The bid was for both locations.
Right.
And if we can get both locations done for five, thirty, six, four, five, you know, that's within the realm of what we were talking about on the ARPA funding.
We have four ninety-one, that was two hundred and about, two hundred and about a roof trap, yeah.
Oh, well, I mean, it's in the range of, it's not that far off. If we can get them both done for them, you know, my, my tendency would be, let's just get this thing started.
Cool.
David, it worked for you?
Whatever y'all's pleasure is on that.
I know, I, I had mentioned to you though that I was gonna rebid it, but based on this, you know, I would think we just go forward with it. Discussion of possible action on reactivating Park and Rec Advisory Board. The last advisory board was disbanded because, well, two reasons. One was, we kinda fell into the trap of, of a lot of feuding back and forth within the board. The other thing though, was that in, in looking into that, we realized that when that board was initially created, it was given capabilities that we're, we didn't wanna continue with. For instance, they, they actually had the authority to contract out for somebody to come in and manage the park. And some of the conversations back then were starting to head off that direction. Basically, it got to the point that it was just a good idea to, I think, just do away with it. And at that time, we said, you know, maybe we'll want one again a little later. I am now getting so much activity and so many requests from citizenry that I do believe that a Park and Recs board that is created as an advisory board without the capabilities the other one had would be helpful. I can live without it, but I think it'd be helpful, and I'm just throwing this out for y'all to consider.
With limited powers and using extreme caution in appointing members of the board.
Oh, absolutely.
Because it can be disastrous, we're not careful.
The, the problem with the Park and Rec Board, I'd like to sort of fashion it after the Golf Course Advisory Board, which has worked very well. The problem with the Park and Rec Board is when parents get involved, people go crazy. So we're gonna have to be very careful about that.
I, I don't wanna interrupt you, I used a little on the. I, I'd like to see a representation of all park users, someone from pickleball, someone from tennis, someone from Little League youth sports, someone from those, so that we have a good variety, because it's really all about Park and Rec, and someone from Swamp the Pool. So we have people, and then those people can go back and tell their groups, this is what we're discussing, or this is what's going on, so that it, it becomes an information panel or board also as well, but they're all in the goal, and maybe even athletic director, you know, the high school I know has gotten involved in the park, so, and then maybe someone from the county, just so, anyway, so it's a, a varied group rather than just the parents of youth sports.
I absolutely agree with you on that. And I would simply say that if we do have any parents getting involved in any way, we, to give us more, we're gonna have to be very careful about it. But yeah, I, I, in terms of being helpful in recommendations, I'm, I'm not at all looking for just the sports, the football, baseball, and social media sports, I, I, I'm, I'm thinking of the whole park from the walking trail all the way to the pickleballs.
How does Kevin feel about it?
I haven't actually discussed it with Kevin.
I mean, I'm okay with having the Park Board back, just want to at least.
Come up to the mic.
Well, I'm okay with having the Park Board back, but you know, before when it was, it could more of a, a youth's turn, but babysitting service, because they were getting more complaints about, you know, little Johnny's daddy said, you know, bad word in the dugout, and you know, that, that kind of board, I, I don't think we need. We don't need, we need somebody that's gonna represent, you know, all aspects of, of the park, and I mean, and that's probably gonna be the best way that they can advocate to you guys to, you know, tell you what we need in, in the future. And I'm, I'm all for that, you know, that's, that's a, that's a true working board to me.
Discussion of possible action of the food pantry box location. One of the things that I had real good intentions of doing and didn't do over the last four weeks was have. weeks was having a conversation with the Health Department about how they felt about having this box put out there. I think that conversation has to take place, and hopefully I'll be able to talk to them tomorrow before the meeting tomorrow night about that. That is the requested location, and I'm not trying to, I'm not trying to jump in between y'all, amongst y'all's decision about whether or not to put it there, I just feel like that we need to speak with the Health Department before we have that discussion.
I was gonna reach out, but I didn't think appropriate, so I did not, so if you could...
And I will certainly do that, so, you know, so I will, I will do that before tomorrow Upon a member to the Department of Family and Children's Services, does anybody have candidates that they want to put forth? Catherine Mayer, I believe, has agreed to serve another term, if y'all are okay with that. Upon of two members to the Library Board, Jody Helms and Jerry Johnson are the current members that are expiring, and they are willing to serve again, but I'm done. Okay. I went to school with Jerry Johnson. I went to school with Jerry Johnson. He was a great avocan, and a whole lot smarter, but I remember it. Discussion, don't, don't give me tickle that, sometimes lose it. Discussion and possible action of recipient, sub-recipient agreement for the public assistance program of Georgia disaster tropical storms, Zeta and disaster severe storms and tornadoes. Keith wanted to present that, and he wasn't able to be here today.
Sign it for the bag out.
I'm sorry?
Sign it for the bag out.
Okay, good, I like that attitude. You okay with that, Carlene?
Yes.
Okay, good. Discussion and possible action on the family connection FY twenty-three contract. David, if you had a chance to look at that, I think it's the same old thing.
I have not, but I would assume that it's essentially the same thing, the funding may have changed a little bit.
Yeah.
That's typically what changes.
Assuming that David, in the end, is okay with the contract, are y'all good with it? Discussion and possible action of a uniform agreement with SINTAS. Sandy, I'm gonna ask you to come talk about that one.
Sure.
We're still good for it.
The company that we are with currently, we've been with for years, way before my time, and the SINTAS folks came by a month or so ago and wanted to talk to us about it, and I think that we'll get a more quality product, I think it'll be better service, and it's gonna save us about three thousand a year on the, we don't have that many departments that have uniforms, but we do have a few.
How many do you have? Eight is what I would...
Departments that use, hmm, we've got some that use the uniforms, and some that participate in the uniform side, and some that participate on the cleaning product side. I'm four to five, so, it's not huge, but it will save us...
And we have had some problems with the servicing lately.
We have.
With the current provider. So, what I would ask tomorrow night would be that we consider changing vendors, we hope we'll get better service, we believe we'll get better service, and we know we'll save some money on it, so...
Do we need to authorize, you've just signed the agreement, or is there a...
I would think probably I would have to present, we don't have the agreement currently, I think that I'd have to present it to y'all for approval.
I don't have any problem with that concept.
This would be to pursue it, to go forward with it. Carlene, you okay with it? Discussion and possible action on contract for EPT requirements to validate that there are no endangered species in Rock Creek at the location of bridge replacements. This is something that we have to do before we can go forward on, we're replacing those bridges, and there is a contract.
I'm fine, I'm excited.
Okay. Carlene, you okay? David, if you had a chance, look at the contract.
Yes, yes.
So, we're good?
That one's good.
Okay. All right, does anybody need executive session?
I'd like to review a couple of legal things.
Okay, then I would make a motion that we go into executive session with no action anticipated. I'll favor. Lottie, this shouldn't take long, if you wanna hang around for us.